Welcome to our first meeting of 2024. It's kind of an exciting day as we've got some business to take care of, but I just wanted to take some time before we get into the business. And thank you, everybody, for last year. And I personally am glad to see that last year go away. But welcome 2024, as Mr. Dillon had said, and year to do more. I'm not sure worries me a little bit.
It just rhymes.
Just a reminder of our mission statement, to promote a high achieving and responsible and responsible citizenship. It's gonna be a long day, long night. And our vision is, is we really want to become the highest achieving rural school district in Idaho. And we're gonna set goals and move forward this year and do our best to achieve the mission statement and the vision. So to begin with tonight, we have some business to take care of here just in our board. We've got two new members we welcome. Two and a half. We're gonna swear to Anna and then all of us are gonna to sign our code of ethics as a trustee, and then we will have some reorganization to do. So before we do everything else, let's take to that, Barb.
All righty, so I would like to ask our three recently elected trustees to step over here and I'll introduce the post office. I've got a good background for you. All righty. Yeah, so if you would all raise your right hand and repeat after me. I state your name.
I, Andrea Williams.
Do swear that I support the Constitution of the United States.
I swear that I support the Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution and the laws of the state of Idaho.
The Constitution and the laws of the state of Idaho.
And that I will faithfully discharge all of the duties
And that I will faithfully discharge all of the duties
of the Office of Trustee of Weezer School District number 431.
Of the Office of Trustees of Weezer School District number 431.
In Washington County, state of Idaho.
In Washington County, state of Idaho.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
Congratulations, you are now trustees. And the three of you do have the oath to sign and return to the convention. To tell like nothing happened, real official. Congratulations. Go straight into the code of ethics for board members. And this, all five of you will be asked to sign this. And I will read it out loud just so the public and the minutes will reflect the fact that this is what your ethics are as a board member. As a member of the Weezer trustees, I will strive to improve public education. And to that end, I will attend all regularly scheduled board meetings insofar as possible, having read my packet, ensuring that I am informed about the issues to be considered at the meeting. Recognize that the board must comply with open meeting law and only has the authority to make decisions at official board meetings. Make all decisions based on the available facts and my independent judgment and refuse to surrender that judgment to individuals or special interest groups. Understand that the board makes decisions as a team. Individual board members may not commit the board to any action unless so authorized by official board action. Recognize that decisions are made by a majority vote and the outcome should be supported by all members. Acknowledge that policy decisions are a primary function of the board and should be made after full discussion at publicly held board meetings. Recognizing that authority to administer policy rests with the superintendent. Two, be open, fair, and honest, no hidden agendas, and respect the right of other board members to have opinions and ideas which differ from mine. Recognize that the superintendent is the board's advisor and should be present at all meetings except when the board is considering the superintendent's evaluation, contract, or salary. Understand the chain of command and refer problems or complaints to the proper administrative office while refraining from communications that may create conditions of bias should a concern ever arise to the attention of the board as a hearing panel. Keep abreast of important developments in education trends, research, and practices by individual study and through participation in programs providing such information. Respect the right of the public to be informed about district decisions and school operations. Understand that I will receive information that is confidential and cannot be shared. Give staff the respect and consideration due skilled professional employees and support the employment of those best qualified to serve as district staff while insisting on regular and impartial evaluation of all staff. Present personal criticism of district school operations to the superintendent or administrator, not to district staff or to a board meeting. Refuse to use my board position for personal or family gain or prestige. I will announce any conflicts of interest before board action is taken. And remember always that my first and greatest concern must be the educational welfare of the students attending the Weezer public schools. So if you would all sign that and accept your obligation of the code of ethics.
So the first thing that we, well, the next thing that we need to do now that we have a full board again is to elect new officers. And as a board, we need a board chair, a vice chair, and a secretary. Any nominations for?
I nominate you, Jim Brush, to have a chair.
Any other nominations anybody would like to?
I'm going to close.
All in favor of Jim Brush being the chair for 2024?
Aye.
Aye.
The second chair that we needed to fill is the vice chairman of the board. And I would like to nominate John Maru as the vice chair.
I'll second.
Any other nominations? All in favor of John Maru being the vice chair?
Aye.
Just wanted to, because you can't refuse that. You made me wonder there for a minute. And next, as, oh, I said secretary, as treasurer of the board. Melanie Price? I will second that. Any other nominations for secretary or treasurer? I'm gonna say it wrong every time now, treasurer of the board? None? All in favor of Melanie as the treasurer?
Aye.
As district clerk, Kyla has been the board clerk. And Barb Shott has accepted an invitation to be our deputy clerk, but it needs to be a motion. So I would like to make a motion to have Kyla as our board clerk and Barbara as our deputy clerk.
I'll second that.
Any questions or concerns about that? All in favor of that motion?
Aye.
Aye.
The next part, the next set of business we need to discuss is setting a meeting time and a schedule for our meetings. Did I miss one? Oh, building secretaries as treasurer. We need to appoint a building secretaries as treasures of their particular buildings. So the secretaries of each building, right? As treasures of their buildings.
And then I can motion for that one? I'll make a motion that we appoint the building secretaries as treasurers of their respective buildings.
I'll second it.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. Now can we go ahead? Maybe I need to give you that. Our meeting schedules, so the meeting schedules is primarily a time that the board can meet together and have the least amount of conflicts that we can have. And of course, Mr. Dillon and now our clerks and deputy clerk. But in the past, we've done it on Wednesdays. We've done it, the first year was it Tuesday? Anyway, it's, but we've changed the weeks of when we've done it. So we found, last year we did it on the second Monday, and it seemed to be a time that we had the fewest conflicts with school events. And also with the board at that time. Is there, does anybody have a time that's best?
It also works good with paint fills.
It does, the beginning of the month instead of the end.
Before they're paid as opposed to after.
So any conflicts with staying with the second Monday?
I'm good to stay.
Okay, so have a motion for the second Monday?
I'll make a motion that our schedule is for the second Monday of the month at 5:30.
I'll second that. Is that, before I do, is that time, it's 5:30, a good time for everybody?
For me.
We will talk about, can we do it separate, talk about locations? I was getting that, I have a note.
Yes, sir.
Appreciate it both. I'm glad you're on top of it. So the motion for second Monday at 5:30.
Second, I'll second that motion. Does someone make a motion?
Yeah. Okay, motion was made at second for second Monday at 5:30. All those in favor?
Aye.
We also need to talk about a location. The reason that's significant this time is I would like to propose that quarterly, we meet at our separate building locations. So that we can have an opportunity to be in every location and have our meeting there and even have the opportunity to see the locations. And people that want to be in the meetings with us can be at those different locations. It's important that we talk about when, how, and when that works. Because we have four, we have four schools. Pioneer Park Middle School and the High School. So it will work out for us to do it quarterly. However, there's specific months that we want to kind of stay away from. We really don't want to be going to easier schools, probably June and July. Possibly not even August as it's the first week back in. We probably don't want to be at Park and Pioneer during Christmas. Just because they're preparing for Christmas, right? Preparing for Christmas and the holidays. So, and I didn't bring my paper that I had scribbled some notes on, but. We're in January, so we're obviously gonna have this meeting here today. February, we could start doing that, that would be our next one. We could even, we can even go to the end and say March. But I would say probably March and September meeting would be the two best times to be at Park and Pioneer and/or Pioneer. Because it's gotten away from the holiday pageants and concerts and things like that. Is there months?
Can I suggest?
Please.
If we're going to do that, let's avoid Park in the winter if possible, just in case something like today happens and it's hard to get up that hill. So if we're gonna do Park and Pioneer in February and September, then I'm thinking September would be best at Pioneer. I'm sorry, Park, but February would be best. I didn't say that right?
This one's dead too. I got, found one. Throw those away. I think I got that one last night too. He totally missed my side eye right there. So, so September, what you're saying is if we went to Park in September?
How do you feel about that, September?
That's just fine, yeah, that's a good month. It should not be snow in September.
We're in, we are in Idaho.
That's true.
So that would leave, what were you saying?
In February. That way?
Yeah. February or March, is there a time in this? And I really, I should probably open this up to see from our, from our school leaders, you know, if there's a month or two that's not good. Hopefully, we've covered some of them in our thoughts. The high school is probably why we want to do it, the end of May, right?
Seventeen.
First, the second Monday of May would just fit right in. Is there, is there anybody that has a problem with us coming to your school and having a board meeting, well, middle school and high school, like the first, the second Monday of December? Is there a reason why we need to stay away from that, you think?
Middle school.
Neither one of them? How about, how about, Mr. Dickerson, how about April?
That would be fine.
That would be fine?
Yes, sir.
So my scribbling says February would be at Pioneer, April would be at the high school, September would be at the Park School, and December would be at middle school? And all other, all other months, we would be right here at the board meeting?
Which way? For December?
Does anybody have any thoughts about that? Significant for us to be talking about this because, because the way we let the public know, if we post this and then we'll continue to talk about through the year that we can post it, everybody will know that we will be moving, but it's posted all at once. And we'll talk about postings here in a minute too, right? Okay, so we need a motion if there's not any problems with that.
And just before you make your motion, Mr. Dillon and I will work with the building administrators to find the best room in each of those schools for the meeting that would accommodate the public as well as the board design.
Fantastic.
If you're okay to leave that latitude with us.
No, I love it, love it, because we say in school, not specific rooms. So we actually talked about doing this a couple of years ago, but we were zooming this meeting. And the logistics of getting all the Zoom and all the equipment to every location seemed a little bit more daunting than to have it just recorded and put in live in the news. So I'm glad that we can do this, I think it'd be fantastic. Okay, so we have a motion then to approve that.
We'll make a motion to approve the meeting places for the 2024 year with all the meetings being here at the district's office except February at Pioneer School, April at the High School, September at Park School, and December at the Middle School. I'll second.
All in favor of the meeting locations that has been given?
Aye.
Okay, we're coming, we're on our way. Ed Academy and that one was a little bit tougher, but we're gonna try to work in our schedule so that we can have at least some of your students in that building where we don't own it is, makes it just a little bit harder. So we're not leaving you out. We are leaving you out of this schedule. We're planning on being able to accommodate them in some way. We'll talk about that.
Just show up for graduation.
Yep. And that was great for all those that haven't been there yet. That is, that is a fantastic celebration, graduation at T D Head along with everywhere, along with the high school, middle school. Everybody has a graduation.
Didn't I see a date on that?
There has been, it varies, right? When we have, it just depends on when we have.
Yeah.
And if we do have a date for that. So we just had one not very long ago, but it'll happen two or three times a year. Yeah, that'll let us know when somebody's prepared for that. So also, we need to talk about, we need to establish where we are gonna post the agendas for the notice of our community. In the past, it's been?
It's on the website, which is required by code. And then it has to be also at the facility where the meeting is being posted. So it'll need to be varying, just like the list. So the meeting will be posted always at the district office and then also at those buildings during the months that it's at those buildings.
Okay.
Unless there's somebody else who would like it posted.
Do we no longer post it at the post office? I know that they did in the past.
Yeah, I asked the same question, not even know this question.
Okay. So we need a motion that would allow us to post, that gives the postings at the district office at all times, on the website at all times, and then at the locations of the meetings when we move.
I'll make a motion that we post our agenda on our online presence at our district office for each month. And then for the months that we are meeting at a different location than the district office, that we will post it on the front doors of those buildings as well.
I will second that motion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Go ahead.
Do we have to post which door? Because every school has a hundred doors, I mean.
I think we just have been doing it at the main entrance, haven't we?
Front door is fine, yes.
The main public entrance, I think, is where it will go. Good question.
So if the motion isn't fine, if I do a friendly amended, to say the main door rather than the front door?
That's acceptable, I think. Okay. Thank you for allowing us to get through our yearly first week business. It's fantastic. Now on to our regular, did I miss anything, Barb?
I did not.
Okay. Now on to our regular board meeting. We'll start with our reports. Mr. Dillon.
Yes, sir, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Ladies and the board, good evening, congratulations and welcome, welcome to the team. First, I'd like to direct your attention to the flyer that I put out in front of you guys. It's in reference to the 19th January event that all host at the auditorium at the high school entitled State of the District. I'll be talking about four key things, and none of those key things, we did, we'll be some bullets. So first, we'll discuss academics and where we're currently set. And then talk about safety and projects, followed by athletics. And then I'll discuss where we're gonna go in the next six months of this school year. And that'll be where all the staff will be that day. And they'll be grab and go breakfast on the way out. Breakfast burritos, we're gonna supply. So should be, should be a good, good opportunity to hear what's going on in the district. And there'll be some time for questions and answers at the end. Next, the food service Facebook is up and running. Have you everybody gotten some things on there, right? So yes, good, so that's up and running. Go out and take a look at that when you get a chance, Facebook food service website. And I'm happy to report that ADA wise, from August till today, we're sitting at 94% as an average, and that's really good. It says three things. It says that the parents are doing the right thing by getting their kids to school. It says our teacher's doing the right thing. And most importantly, the students are doing the right thing. So that's, that's a great thing for the district. 94% is, that's great. As you know, a day on the hill is coming up, February 19th through the 20th at the Grove Hotel and the Capitol. And so far, I've got everybody going, except you won't be able to make it, right, ma'am?
Yeah.
Okay.
We had a volleyball tournament.
Okay, yes, ma'am. And then one, one day, right, was it two days, but not spending the night?
Yeah, I have to be home by then.
Yes, sir. Okay, outstanding. Last month in May, correct me if I'm remembering this, last month, we had our spot inspections on our buses. And I'm happy to report that we're sitting at 96% compliance rate. We had two findings, and those two findings will be, will be closed out this week by me. And we are doing it, they just didn't show up in our policies. And as you remember, those policies are the eight thousands, which we have not approved yet. But we're doing it, we just learned the policy, so not really a big deal. But 96%, and everything they looked at, it's a pretty, pretty good, pretty good number. I'd like to talk to you a little about our special education students and their academics. And I'm thrilled to report that at Pioneer School, 64% of our students are on track to meet or exceed their growth for the end of the year. At Park, 72% of their students are on track to meet or exceed growth in reading, and the middle school, 57% are on track to meet or exceed their growth in reading. And again, one of our most vulnerable populations is doing, doing well, if you ask us. So, and we're just continuing to move the, move the needle north. I know you saw the fence being taken down. The guy ran into the fence, you know, over by Pioneer on Sixth, on Seventh Street. We're gonna replace that fence, right now it's four foot. We're gonna replace it with a six foot fence along, along there and along the side of the Glenn House. So it's all standardized, so it'll be six foot fence all the way around. And then on the other side of Pioneer, on the Sixth Street side, where our employees, you know, they pull in there, it gets real icy there. There's not real good drainage. Well, we're working in conjunction with the city in which we're gonna add some curving and gutter. And they're gonna, they're gonna redo that street right in front of it. So the drainage, continue, the water will continue to push down, and there will stop being an ice rink there for cars and for students and parents. And last but not least, we are going to, right now, if you've been over there, you've seen that we have these, what are they called, T posts? They're green T posts with barbed wire. And we're gonna get rid of that. We're gonna take part of the four foot fence that's coming off the Seventh Street. We're gonna move it over with the proper posts and the four foot fence to make it look more presentable than those T bars and barbed wire.
That's gonna be next to the curbing.
Yes, sir.
New curbing.
So submit your questions, that's all I have for this evening.
Can you make the sidewalk on the curb?
Well, we did not because of the, of the expense of the sidewalk that we'd have to foot the bill for. But later on, we're definitely gonna look at that as well as putting curbing and gutter further on down. Right now, it's just 50, it's a 50 foot piece. But now we go on down further in the future, yes, sir, great question, thank you.
I don't know that you were here when we received the pictures from community input. Is that the section that was muddy and nasty?
It is not.
Out onto the road?
It is not, I got those pictures in my drawer. But what they will do, it will help push that water on down, fixing it up upstream, so to speak. But we are looking at finishing, finish that whole area.
Okay.
Yes, sir?
Any questions?
One additional question, just, I haven't been there for a handful of months since we started talking about the buses for emergency calls. But are there access points from Sixth into that gravel lot there, are there?
Oh, great question. And Dave and I looked at it today, and what Michael and I have found, right now, it's missing a gate. it's missing a gate. And if you remember how, if we do have to evacuate Pioneer School, we got four hundred and twenty, twenty-some students trying to get through that area, we need to do that with practice and with single file, but the biggest thing right now is there's no gate. So what's happening is, everybody and their brother from those, well, everybody's letting their dogs run around there, and, and you, you know what? In fact, I spent thirty minutes the other day cleaning my shoes up, but anyway, we found the gate, we're gonna reattach the gate with a padlock that every teacher will have in case of an emergency, and you're the first teacher out and through that gate, that you can unlock that pad, unlock that gate, and then they all go back there by the, the, those apartments, and then May comes through with the bus and, and picks them up. Does that answer your question? Yeah.
Okay.
Wouldn't a key lock be better, where just a punch number and it opens up with a key?
Michael?
Uh, I would say probably not, because then somebody's gonna be in that, I'm trying to remember that combo, whereas if they've got, and you're fumbling with it, you get one number off, you're not gonna be able to, whereas if it's their, their classroom key that they can use to open that lock, it's right there in their hand, they don't have to think about it, they put it in, unlock the lock.
So it would be a classroom key?
It would be a classroom key that would unlock, not, not the, not the building master key, the classroom key, so that any, any person with that classroom key, which should be any staff member, at the minimum, has a classroom key. They will be able, able to open that gate without thinking.
That gate would be good to keep traffic from going across there.
Yes, sir.
Along with that six-foot fence, I'm glad that we're gonna go all the way.
Between that gate and getting that north end of that playground fenced off should be a major deterrent for people to just beep off across the park or the playground in the middle of school.
Yeah.
Cause I saw that when I worked there, you get somebody taking a short pit, and they walk right through the middle recess. So this will be a very, very good place to do it.
Good, good for safety.
I remember when we first tried that down there, we had a uproar from the apartments.
Okay, that's what I'm here for, sir. That's what I'm here for. We'll answer those questions as they come. When we, when we, when we're talking about the safety of our kids, it's way more important than somebody deep access to walk across there, so we'll deal with that when it comes. All right, let's move on to our administrative boards. Mr. Dickerson?
Yeah, so just, uh, Dr. Dickerson from the high school principal, appreciate you allowing me to speak real quick, um, but just my reports, a couple of things, I'm just gonna hit on two, uh, two things going on at the high school right now. Um, an update on our accreditation process, um, we're moving along through that, finding evidence, kind of telling our story to, um, to the, a group called Cognia that's gonna come and make sure that we're doing what we need to be doing in the school district, so, or in the, the, at the high school. So we've gone through, got a bunch of our evidence of what we do, and all we're gonna, um, put in place is just a, a story that they're gonna see, you know, the processes that are taking place in the high school. Uh, we're working on that, I got a pretty good team, uh, put together that's helping me, uh, find this evidence, working with teachers, counselors, administrators, and everybody involved to, to tell our story. So, um, that's what's going on at the high school, um, it's, it's, uh, it's taking a lot of work, um, just with kind of some updated processes that are, have, have, came to light with that, um, new process, I guess, so. Um, with that, the, the second thing I'd like to talk about, uh, you saw in my board report, the, um, the addition of the driver's education, uh, class. What has kind of happened is, we wanna keep offering that class to students, but it's, it's starting to become a drain, um, where we're not making any money and it's not self-sufficient. And so what we'd like to do is one, offer overload class, so students can receive a credit for that, uh, class, um, and students are gonna be able to use, uh, uh, advanced opportunities money to pay for that class, um, which it will be nice for some parents that struggle to, to accommodate their children with, with the, the funding for that. So, um, that's pretty neat, uh, Damon Cartwell is going to be our lead, uh, teacher, um, and head teacher, and he's going to run that program, he's been doing that for quite a while, um, with, uh, a few other members, um, that are going to, to help, help with that. Uh, this winter session, we're gonna allow twenty-two students to join, um, just because of the hours of drive time in the evenings, uh, are cut a little short, we have to limit that number. Um, however, we do, uh, see that we're gonna probably offer two more sessions this spring, and so overall, we'll be able to accommodate more students than we have in the past, and so, pretty neat opportunity for our kiddos, uh, with that. So, um, at the high school, uh, again, just, uh, lots going on with sports and, um, basketball and wrestling are in full swing, and, um, going through that, um, every night the high school's pretty busy, so that's all I have. Is there any questions for me, as far as the class or anything else?
A quick question.
Yes, sir.
So, my kid is, uh, is older for his grade, he's in eighth grade, is qualified for the drivers and program. How does the newly structured, um, instruction course affect those kids that are not quite high school age yet?
It's a good question. I have no idea on that.
It's an overload class?
Um, it's an overload class, so my guess is that they would be able to register for it, just like any other student. But as far as transportation, you know, they're not gonna be able to ride a bus to and from, so they're gonna have to have parents drop them off, I guess, and some things like that, so.
This overload class, hope we understand, is overload class, could mean that it takes place during school hours?
No.
Or is it like before or after?
Beyond their regular school day. So it could, it could go before or after, but it, it has to be outside of their regular class.
Okay.
Schedule, so, um, yeah. In addition to our seventh grade, we have, we have another overload class, uh, we have our, um, our band that takes place in the spring.
Is that a little bit like the zero hour?
The zero hour, yep.
Okay. So does that need to be a board motion for a zero overload class?
No.
Because it's outside, okay, and it's why I wanted to make sure that we were giving you all the correct...
This is, this is something that we've always tried to hold in-house with our, um, district. I know a lot of other districts sub this out and try to get them to go to these other agencies, but it's really nice that we offer this for our kids, so I think it's a pretty neat opportunity where students can use some of those fund, uh, funding dollars from the state to pay for it, so it should help them out.
Thank you.
Well, first, I'd like to welcome the new board members, I look forward to working with you all. Um, at the middle school, um, yeah, things are up and running, we're, we're busy. Um, we ended the school year with some celebrations, we had some, uh, AR celebrations, um, had some activities going on, um, and, um, some things that we're looking forward to here coming up in the future is, um, our science bowl, uh, led by Mrs. Turner, so we do have roughly around twelve kiddos that have signed up, um, so they've been coming in, um, on, on their own time, um, usually like on a Friday or on a Saturday, they come to practice, and so they're gearing, gearing up for that competition, last year they attended, um, and so that will be on February the tenth, um, at BSU. Um, so really look forward to that. Um, we, like Mr. Dickerson, we have sports, uh, going right now, we currently have our boys' basketball, uh, team up and running, um, we, uh, did pretty well with our, uh, girls' basketball teams, they were, uh, second place in the eighth grade, and seventh grade, uh, was fourth place. So, uh, we look forward to, uh, these next round of, of competitions, and, um, yeah, we're just up and running and ready to go, so. Any questions for me at the middle school?
Thank you, appreciate your time.
Thank you.
All right. Good evening, everyone. Uh, my name's Jeff Church, I'm the lead teacher at Indian Head Alternative High School. Not a lot to, to report, we have eighteen students, uh, this, this session, we're almost smack in the middle of our third out of five sessions for the year. Um, this session is scheduled to finish on the thirtieth of January, unfortunately, I can't tell you with confidence that we're gonna have a graduate at that point. Started this term, I thought maybe we had two kids that were flirting with that, but, uh, I don't wanna put too much pressure on them right now with, with getting their, their coursework done and times of that, but, um, um, things are going well, um, and hopefully at the end of our fourth session, we'll have a couple graduates. Yep, any questions for me? All right, congratulations, and good evening.
Will you, will you let us know if you, because it'll be before our next meeting, so?
I will.
Would you let us know if you have something?
I will send an email out to the district office and they'll...
Okay, perfect.
Hopefully.
Thank you. Well, welcome and thank you for joining us, we're excited to have you here this year. Um, I'm Brooke Winston, principal at Park. Um, I do have the privilege of having two grade levels, four and five, and I will say, it is fantastic, even though no one wants to come to my school, cause there's a hill. It's still, it's a great building, great kids and, and great staff. Um, so a couple of things that I didn't have on my board report that I'm excited to share with you is, um, our, Mrs. Odette wrote a grant and was, we were accepted to have ANT program, and it's really kind of neat. So what it is, is it's a walking program, and they give us all the technology, so the students have bracelets, that they track how many laps they go, and each time they get a lap, they're, they're tracking it as they continue on, and then they get charms and they get, uh, we're gonna acknowledge them at our assemblies and do all of those pieces. So it's really advocating that they get out there and exercise. So really excited she got that, and it's starting tomorrow, we're gonna do it on Tuesdays and Thursdays for right now during lunchtime, and the fourth graders will come up with the fifth graders, will have enough supervision so that that can be just in a walking area. They practiced it during PE, they have it all mapped out, and they're really excited about that. So you'll be seeing it on Facebook and hearing the kids talking about their walking program. So it's really exciting, and hopefully the teachers will get out there and join them as well. Another thing we started this week is, I put out a student survey, and I did this at the end of the year last year, and I really wanted to get the information sooner, and I'm glad I did, because we asked the kids a lot of questions about, do you feel safe in your classroom? Do you have an adult that you can talk to? I know my teacher cares about me because of this. One thing I love about the assemblies is this, and all of those pieces, and I was really impressed, two classes have finished it already, and I was reading their responses today, and it was really eye-opening, and I'm excited to share that data with the staff. I'll share the separate data with each teacher so they can see what their students say, and then as a whole, we'll look at it and see what kind of things we can, we can change as we go forward. One of the questions we talked to them about is their ISIP goals, and I think I mentioned that to you last month. Now we are adding achievement, um, recognition to our assemblies, and so each month if a student meets their individual ISIP goal for either math or reading, they could have an ISIP signing, just like you would if you were gonna go to college. And so we put the letters down and they sign their little name, and, uh, I, I was really excited to see, I said, why is your, meeting your ISIP goal important to you? And they said, because my mom and dad are proud of me, because I'm proud of me, because my teacher's proud of me, because I wanna do the best that I can. We're talking about fourth and fifth graders here. So it was really exciting to see that they're taking that ownership, and that's what this all was about, was for them to know that this is for them, and if they had more buy-in, then they would definitely be trying harder. So we're excited about that, and, um, I think that's all that I neglected to put on the report, because it just happened and I'm pretty excited about it, but do you have any other questions for me? Thank you.
Just wanna echo the congratulations to the board, uh, new board members, and I have you guys as part of the, the team, as Mr. Doolan said though, so looking forward to working with you guys. And enjoying, uh, my time at Pioneer School, that's continuing to be a great thing, and we have an awful lot of stuff going on down there that's, uh, I would like to share with you, some of it was in my board report, but then also we had some new stuff, uh, actually come up just, uh, you know, late last week and early this week. One of the things that we do every month at Pioneer School right now is we have a, a character trait assembly, and we recognize kids for, um, in each one of the classes for doing or kind of exemplifying those character traits, and our, our character trait for, uh, December was honesty, and, uh, we were able to recognize those kids today, and, uh, they get a certificate, and they're recognized by the, the student body and, uh, all the teachers, and then we take their pictures and we put them on a big, uh, we have a huge poster in the cafeteria and on it says, look who got caught doing something good. And, uh, we keep those pictures up for a month, and then they'll rotate through, and we have different character traits each month, and, uh, the one that the kids are working on for the month of January is self-control. And, uh, so, pretty cool, if you're down there, poke your head in the cafeteria and see the kids smiling, holding their certificates, uh, it's a lot of fun, and we did that assembly today, so it was a great event. Erica Estes, um, has worked with, um, Aaron Brown, Aaron Mackey, uh, Weezer High School graduate, um, who actually, um, works at the Idaho Children's Museum, and, uh, they came and visited Pioneer School earlier this year, and they brought in some STEM activities for our kids to see, and all of our students had an opportunity to rotate through there. And at that time, Aaron and Erica were kind of talking, and Aaron mentioned that there might be an opportunity for a grant to get our kids to actually be able to go to the museum in Meridian and actually visit. And, uh, we were notified, um, this week that Aaron has secured a, um, a grant, and all of our first graders can go free of charge, and, uh, actually spend a couple hours in the museum in Meridian. Um, so I touched base with Mr. Doolan and with May, uh, to see if this is something we can pull off. So we're actually planning on January thirty-first and February first, uh, taking all of our, uh, first graders to the Children's Museum in Meridian, so we're super excited about that opportunity for kids to get over and see all the different STEM activities and how they relate to careers. So, uh, very excited for that to, um, for that to be taking place. And then, um, I think I reported, um, I can't remember what month it was, but we had a couple of teachers, um, go over to Homedale to visit with some of the teachers that are, um, using the wonders materials that we're currently using in, um, English Language Arts K-five right now, and, uh, visited with Brooke a little bit, and it looks like, uh, hopefully this week on Thursday, we're trying to work on sending some first grade teachers and a fourth and fifth grade teacher over to, uh, kind of collaborate with those Homedale teachers again, and, and, and visit their classrooms and see how they're using those materials, so we're excited about that opportunity, and really thankful to, um, Homedale for opening their doors and letting our teachers come over and collaborate with them. And then, uh, um, on January seventeenth, I believe it is a Wednesday, um, our Southwest Literacy Collaborative will get together again, and, um, this time we are gonna be all meeting at, uh, this, um, in Payette, and, uh, we'll get to spend some time in the Payette School District, and again, all those teachers get to get together from different school districts, it's, uh, Weezer, Payette, Homedale.
Fruitland.
Fruitland?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay, so it's a great opportunity for all those different teams to get together and talk, and talk about best practices and, and what's going on in those districts, so, um, I think it's some of the best professional developments we definitely offer to our teachers, is to have an opportunity to talk to other teachers who are out there doing the same thing that they're doing, and share great ideas and, and do that, so make those professional connections. So, do you guys have any questions for me? All right, thank you.
Just making sure I'm okay. Um, again, I, welcome to our new board members, it's exciting as well, new start, new year, Kanda Calendar leads speaking. Um, anyway, the, I, just a couple of things to add to, uh, my report that I shared with you. Uh, we received news back from our general supervision file review, which is basically the state compliance process for making sure that all of our IEPs are meeting compliance. So, um, for a district our size, we have to review seven files, which doesn't seem like very many, but takes a long time to look at twenty-one different items, and then there's multiple checklists depending on what the kiddos are eligible for in terms of services. Um, so we do that process, and then we send all of those names to the State Department, they randomly choose two, and then we have to submit, um, those files to the State Department for a review. So we did that, um, we had three small things that came up, and I say small because they literally are like clerical things for the most part, oh, you wrote this here, it needs to be written on this part. Um, so I'm really excited for the growth and development that I've seen in our special education, uh, team, our teachers and the way that they're working on IEPs and, and writing their goals, uh, and just sort of the process we're trying to get in place where we're reviewing them, um, getting them out to parents and teachers, um, our goal is to get them out to everybody at least five to seven days before the meeting, so everybody's really versed in what's happening in that draft IEP before the meeting, and that's very much, um, an asset to us in that, um, compliance piece. I'm really excited to, to do that, we'll make the quick changes, uh, and that will be done, and we won't have any compliance issues as far as our IEP writing process goes for the State Department. Um, and then just to dovetail on what Mr. Doolan shared with our building level, uh, growth data, in November, our special education kiddos K-eight, we, uh, fifty-nine percent of those kids were on track for annual or exceeding annual growth, and now we're up to sixty-five percent total across the district, and, and I know that's just K-eight, um, but
And, and I know that's just K-8, but we are going to work on a secondary progress monitoring schedule so that we can also track some of that data with relationship to their progress towards their IEP goals and be able to give you some information for our high school kiddos as well. So very excited about what we're trying to do and where we are. Any questions that I can answer for you with regard to special education?
I don't have it this time. I think just a note that some of us know what the numbers in the graph would be more than others. So we may, because I know I've driven, but we may make sure that we have some training on what, what we're, what we're asking for, for numbers and things from our administrators. So everybody knows what one of them. I had to get that out before I forgot because I totally forgot. Any other reports, Mr. Doolan, that you would like for us to have from your administrative teams?
No, sir.
I guess the rest of you are off. Thank, thank you for being here. Appreciate, appreciate, appreciate your time and effort.
Thank you.
You guys can leave. I'm going to make you join again. Somebody here knows what the score is.
Somebody.
Who knows?
Don't tell me. Let's move on. I believe we're on to our consent, consent, consent agenda.
It's early.
We're, we're still okay. So first off, the consent agenda is we need to approve the, the minutes that were given to us from our prior meeting. Does any, are you going to talk mainly to these three? If you guys, you were here last meeting, but if you have any questions, any changes that need to be made on the post meeting minutes that we had? Okay? And just as an explanation, the way we've, we've been doing this is we do a motion at the end of all the consent agendas. That way we're not doing a motion for every individual. Our current agenda, Mr. Doolan, any changes that we need to make on our current agenda?
No, sir.
Okay. I didn't see any either, so it looks good. Any staff notifications that, that we need to visit about whether they're retiring or resigning or?
No, sir.
Good. Glad to hear that too. Any, any staff that we need to hire?
Yes, sir. We, for Kyla Lev, Barb and I, we talked and we find ourselves in, and we have, we have, we have subs, obviously. However, we have a hard time sometimes ensuring that subs do the job that they sign up to do via frontline. So Kyla ran the data before she left and referenced frontline report. And I'm, I, I want to tell you what the data showed. It shows since the first of the school, Pioneer went 21.5 days without a, a, a teacher for, for, over that period. Could have been throughout or it could have been one class, but 21.5 days. That's three weeks without a teacher in front of our, our students. They used a para, they used Mr. Davies, things of that nature. Park went 14.5 days without a teacher. Middle school, 10 days. And the high schools spent 19 days without a teacher in front of our, our students. I've been out there numerous times and Drew's been southern, his whole front office has been southern. So it's going to be our recommendation that we, we look at hiring a certified substitute teacher that would be at the disposal of the district every day. And what that will do, that will guarantee at least one sub that cannot back out from a job via frontline because that's going to be their job is to, to substitute throughout the district and, and, and fulfill that need.
Do some of those, do some of those numbers you have, is it, is some of those numbers that it was one hour a day? Or is it, it's most of those, it's 21 days?
It is days.
Yes, it's days. Yes, sir. Now we have a training coming up for subs, but again, you, you don't have to come. However, we are going to instill a, a more strict approach to kind of like the Free Stripes in Your Out law in reference to you sign up for a job and you don't come three times in a row. Well, that tells us you probably don't want to be a part of our team and we don't, we need to. We depend on subs to get us through the, through the day. So we'll talk about that a little later.
How, how do you see one, one certified sub teacher? What, how will that change those numbers? 21 days, 19 days? I mean, because I, I'm assuming they weren't all the same days, right?
No, sir. No, sir.
Will it be pretty significant having more of a full-time person?
Well, I, I think, we think that it will specifically in the secondary schools. It, because in the, in the primary, it's, it's, it's sometimes easier to get a para to cover. But you want a certified person up in front of, you know, your sec, our, our sec. We want one all the time, but we have to pick and choose. We want one at the secondary school. And that's going to, that would be their, their number one focus. If not needed, the high school, we'll look to the middle school. We'll just work, work our way down.
Any other questions? How, how, go ahead.
I was just going to ask for those days that people, that you didn't have subs. Are they days that there was a sub signed up and they just didn't show up? Or you didn't have enough subs to even sign up?
Both. Both.
What's, what's your plan for the, the pay of a certified's full-time sub?
We, Kyla and Barb sit down and it'd be, it'd be a, a, a contract for the rest of this year. And nothing promised after that. So category one. And budget wise, we were able to do it. I'll take it from the budget, from the substitute monies that we already have allotted for, for that, that specific.
In filling substitute positions, are you still going to go out to frontline first? So let's say there's a empty at the high school position. Are you going to frontline first to try to fill that before you go as a certified sub? Or how's that going to work out?
Yes, however, there, we have not gone a day where that, or a sub is not needed in some school in the district. So that, that person would be utilized every day.
I guess that was my, my
Yes, sir.
I think, Mr. Doolan, just one other thing, when, when you and I talked about it, was there another aspect of that subs, full-time sub that you had that would, that they could be doing that would fill a need in our district? I, I'm trying to remember.
Yes, you're spot, great question. You're spot on. And we have, for better lack of words, we, we, we refunk it. And if we're going to pay, if we're going to pay a, a certified salary, then I'm not going to, we're not going to ask that person to do another job. We, we, we got to get the best thing out of our buck, so to speak, for that salary and that person in that position. That's what they'd be hired to do. So I wouldn't, we wouldn't want them doing anything else.
Okay.
However, comma, we do have another, we do have some other applicants for that position that you're talking about.
That we're talking about?
Yes, sir. So we're moving in the right direction.
I just wanted to.
Yeah, great. Yeah, great, great.
So we'll, we'll talk about another position in future, at a future date.
What's kind of the logistics of that? Like, is this some, is, I'm assuming we have a sub caller still?
No, ma'am.
Oh, we do not? Oh, that's what frontline does. And they just do it. So they would, they would assign that person first?
You actually can go out and select what you want. You can go out right now and if there's a job available in February or March, you can put in for it.
Okay.
And, and we, we talked about it last year and, you know, we, we found ourselves in a terrible situation for what happened with our sub caller, Mr. Scow.
Yeah.
And, and on the same token though, and Drew always says, and I, and it's, it's a great point. When you have somebody on the other end to say, hey, we really need you today.
Right.
That, that, that piece is, is, is missing. I'll admit that.
Yeah.
However, it is 2024. And we need to start moving towards working smarter and not harder. It's just we find ourselves in a position that we're in because of that very, that very statement. But many more things can be taken from the, from frontline report wise that helps Kyla, that helps Barb, that helps the district identify needs or desires or wants or, or issues than we would, than we would have had before. So frontline is a great, it's used all over the world, or United States anyway, in other school districts. And we decided to go with that and it's a great, but, but you're missing that, you're missing that, that human piece. Did it answer for me?
Well, kind of. I guess I'm still kind of confused on how this like certified person that we would be paying.
Okay, if I'm a sub.
How they're going to be.
They can't back out. If they back out, they're in breach of their contract.
And just how do we make sure we have them in the, like, most needed spot for the day?
Well, that's going to be up to him.
You? Okay.
And him and me.
Okay.
Can I speak first?
Yes, sir.
So to start out, their day, they would, they would come to the high school first. And the reason we've kind of put that in place is because those classes are accredited classes where we've got to get, we need a teacher in front of those students every day if we can. And where we have particularly somebody that is, could be certified, a certified teacher in front of our kids is the best bang for our buck. And so they're going to come to the high school and see if we have a need. And then if they do not have a need there, then they are going to go down the list of schools until we find them a landing spot for the day. And I will tell you, they're, they will not go a day without subbing somewhere.
Oh, I don't doubt it. I just was wondering, yeah, the logistics of how do we make sure they're in the, how are we going to get the bang for our buck?
And, and so, and another thing, at the high school, if we have a sub that we know is going to be gone ahead of time, we will plug that individual into those spots so that we know that we have somebody in those important classes every single day ahead of time.
Okay. Makes sense. Thank you.
Super good question. Yes, sir. Thank you. Financial report.
Right in your packets, Ms. Kyla prepared this and so I'll just present her information. So you'll see that the general fund revenue is at 65% of the year-to-date budgeted amount. And at this point in time, we should have received 75% of our state revenue. And we have received 79% of our state revenue. Now remember, February will be what they call the true-up payment. February is the very first payment that we receive that's based on this year's data. The 79% of budgeted amount that we've received to date is reflective of last year's information at this year's rates. So overall, we're at 65% of our year-to-date revenue in the general fund. Also take into consideration that January is the time that we'll receive our first payment from county taxes. So we can, this coming in on the general fund, which I don't believe we have anything because of Hospital 292. So we shouldn't see a significant impact to that, other than we will receive Hospital 292 funds. And then again, as you go down through the expenses, the number that you always want to keep in mind is we should spend between eight and nine percent of the expenditure lines each month. So there are of course those things that are going to be over budget because they're front-loaded. You know, we purchase curriculum at the beginning of the year. So elementary and secondary curriculums, individual line items are going to be more than your eight percent because they're an annual purchase. But for the most part, as you just take a look at this, you know, we are four months into the year. So we should be, you know, in that 40 to 50% range, 40 to 45% range. And we're in those areas with everything except alternative school. And that's just a line item issue. We just needed to fund that differently than we did. And our funds in the budget available will do that. So Kyla and I will be working when we are looking towards that February true-up payment that we're going to receive to make sure that we are in compliance with our expenditures with the revenues that we're going to receive. The preliminary look at those revenues or that our budget was conservative on the revenue side of the house, which is good. We should receive a little bit more money than what we budgeted for. And so we'll make those budget recommendations to you probably in February, March timeframe as we begin to look at the FY '25 budget. But when you get down to the bottom line, we're at 46% of expenditures. You know, oh, excuse me, this is a six-month year-to-date picture so that we are, you know, less than 50%, which we're halfway through the year. So we're right on target for general fund. And then on federal funds, everything is within compliance of the budgets that have been submitted to the state for the federal programs. As well as the special education, we're in line with all of those line items. And all of the individual programs, you know, there, there's nothing extraordinary occurring in any of those line items. So feel good about where we are in the budget, feel good about our revenue picture. And you'll be seeing more changes as we get that true-up payment in February. I can ask Kyla if she wanted to add anything onto that. Ms. Kyla, do you want to unmute yourself and add anything to that?
No, you explained it very well. Thank you. And I am listening.
Just, it was very important, Kyla. She has never, ever missed a formal meeting of the board, a special meeting. And so she's still not missed a meeting. So thank you for putting that report together for me.
It's almost like you've done that before, Mark. Thank you, Kyla. And have a fun rainy vacation. Any, any other questions? Any, any, any questions about financials?
What are the inactive accounts?
Inactive accounts. Tell me where you're looking.
At the bottom.
There at the bottom of.
Student information, school, school year maintenance.
Are you in federal?
Very bottom of the descriptions.
Inactive accounts down here.
Barb, I just list those so that people know accounts that we may not be using anymore versus counts that we activate again. And yes, probably on the federal, that 273, remember what we're doing with that? That's available one, two for the half year, for the half of Mr. Zerwas. So.
Yep, exactly. Okay, I can address that. The inactive accounts, there are accounts that are, that we have previously used. So there were all the federal COVID dollars. And so specific funds had to be set up for those. As for one, dollars have been completely expended, but the fund that still exists, it just shows a zero balance in there. So if you look at our entire financial statement rather than the summary document, you're going to see a large number of accounts that have nothing happening in them. And it's just because they are historical accounts that may have something in the future coming into them, but definitely have historical account activity in them that we could always pull and show anybody who needed to see that activity. But they're just those accounts that we no longer, like, for example, the Fund 273 is a 21st century grant. That grant expired two years ago. But we will always seek applying for that grant again in the future so that fund may become active again. So it's just to let you know, when you look at the full report that's on our website, you may see these other account numbers that have nothing in them. So they're just inactive because that particular fund's purpose is not in use with this school year. And you'll see that we do have a little bit of difference in the checking account balance, $739. Every October, we do adjustments on the ancillary insurance products that we offer through American Fidelity. It takes American Fidelity's billing. It's an odd situation. American Fidelity sends us the bill, but it takes their bill a few months to catch up with changes that people made that were affected in October. And so we pay the amount of the bill that's due. They tell us we owe a different amount. And so we're just in the, in the midst of reconciling that. We are expecting a check back from American Fidelity to cover that outage. So it's not really an out-of-balance situation in the checkbook. It's just money that's due from them.
Everything looked good when you were doing checks, Mr. Doolan? Any other questions? We have one, one final thing on the consent agenda and that is to
I can make a motion?
Paying the bills.
Oh, I thought you were just
That's bill, that's, well, that was a financial report now that bills, yes. No. But I did ask you about the bills. Sorry. Does anybody have any questions about bills that need to be paid? Ask Melanie because she sees them, stamps her name on a lot of them.
Mr. Price, if I might?
Please.
Just for the new board members, attached in your packet is just a listing of the bills and the dollar amount. And then Ms. Price, as the treasurer for the district, signs those checks and they're counter-signed by Kyla. So she's actually approving the specific checks. You guys look at the list of them. Should be having questions on the list that's been presented to you this Should be having questions on the list that's been presented to you, this will be the time to address them.
All right. Having no questions, we need to move from our consent agenda, which means that we need a motion.
Make a motion to approve our consent agenda.
A motion has been made to approve our consent agenda and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
All right, it was unanimous. We will move on now to citizen comments. I don't think that we've received any notice. Will be a short comment type, but we do have the W E A in house with us, and we would like to offer them a little bit of time.
Just a little, they can handle that.
Oh, the time's up.
I've got papers green.
Nicole, may God love her, could not be here, and I don't, I don't think that it would take one whole hand to count how many times she has missed a board meeting as either co-president or just woman to whom I bow. So she can't be here. First and foremost, we really wanted to welcome our new board members. It's super exciting slash weird when former students become board members and are my boss's boss's boss and such, but also incredibly cool. So really, thank you. And to those leaving, just a sincere thank you for their service. This takes time, this takes stuff. It, it can be a draining situation, and, and we just, members and non-alike appreciate those who are leading. Our team seems to be the theme for the year, which has been great. We kind of call it cheers and jeers, but we don't have jeers, we just have cheers. So the third grade wanted to let board members know that they're revamping third grade math intervention. They're leveling kids three days per week to target weaknesses and enhance student strengths. So that's always a good thing. Middle school, very excited, very underlined twice, to have their custodial staff back, and apparently one new. So they're, they're pretty happy campers. Everybody, non, members and non, were very, very appreciative of the workday, which was a true, by definition, work day before second semester started. That was ridiculously fantastic. High school is very, very sad to lose Ted in so many ways, but we're really, really happy to see Mr. Grant back and filling in and, and taking a large burden off young man who's trying to do way too many things, but he's not in the room for me to give him a side eye. And I mean, not a jeer, really, just there were an awful lot of issues end of semester with Infinite Campus, with printing reports, with posting grades. It was a learning experience for an awful lot of us techie or no, somewhere along that continuum, to get all of that done and done correctly and in a timely manner. We had some, some growth pains with that, but, but it all worked well, helping each other out, staff ran around doing things. An awful lot of phone calls down here. I think Melissa probably should go into witness protection for changing her number so that we stop calling and bothering her. So really, that, that was it. We don't meet until, we have a regular meeting next month, so, I'm sorry, next week. So I'm sure concerns will pop up then, so for right now, I just get to do the happies and the warm fuzzies, and Infinite Campus gave us fits, but it's over now. So really, unless you have questions for or about W E A, we're just really, really happy.
Thank you.
Glad you asked.
Subbing to the cowboys.
Cowboys game.
We have some action items that we have to consider and take care of, and again, you two, we've been working on policies. Just a brief explanation. We have a regular board meeting, the second Monday of every month, and recently, in the last four to six months, we have a meeting on the third Thursday. And, and that's a morning meeting. We meet from nine to whenever the policies are done. We've been out of here at ten-thirty, and we've been out of here at two. But hopefully no more twos, because that was a lot of policies that we went through. So we will continue to work through policies. Our policy manuals is very outdated. And so we're trying to bring that up to current policy manual, so it's just, it's taken us some time, but we're gaining. So the policies that we need to talk about today, the reason I've given you that is unless you've gone through and read some of these, they're second readings, right? Every one of them on our agenda today is a second, oh wait, forty-three thirty is a first reading. And forty-two-ten is a first reading, but it takes, so two of them, we don't have to have a motion, but in order for us to get them to make a motion that we've read them, they are current second reading, and so the first, the first policy is that the nine thousands. There were a few of those.
Mr. Chairman, just a point of clarification for me, I apologize. These policies that are first reading were, they were amended. They were in our work session as amendments, if I recall correctly. So I thought you could do an amendment on the first reading.
Oh, we, we did talk about that, too. Whether or not we could do that, there was...
And it doesn't matter? I just want to make sure that I noted correctly.
Because we've, we've gone over them, that they had to be amended. But let's, we'll just work down through there. The nine thousands, they were insurance and operations and safety program. Does, Senator Melody, do you have any questions about those? Did you, let's really get and see any changes that we made?
From my notice, the only one that I noticed was the ninety hundred, and the changes that we suggested are the changes that are...
That are in there? So let's, can we do all these with one motion? We don't need to, okay. Let's move on to the twenty-three, thirty-five, thirty-five, twenty, that, that second set of policies. The digital deadlines, contagious infection diseases, student activity fund, and the credit cards. Any questions?
If I recall correctly, the credit card board, we just put it overall limit rate.
I have a good dot comma tab that either or for the one and two. Just trying to find it. At least where it designated it to the administrator.
We need to then consider the, the changes in forty-two-ten. And that was the community, the use of our school facilities. They were amendments to policies that we had already adopted. If, if, that's what we were talking about, if, if we're just amending policy that we already have, we could, we could make this a consideration as a second reading. But if we are adopting a new policy, there has to be a first and a second, correct?
And this is the one that we made the change to allow building administrators to make the decision?
Correct. Okay. And the last one was forty-three thirty, also amendments. I went to a basketball game the other night, I wonder how many people have read this one? Any, and this is a spectator conduct and sportsmanship for athletics and co-curricular events is what this policy is. I think, I think it's a really good policy, but I think we're going to have to be careful that this one doesn't get bent too far. We need to Bowen, Bowen, your staff are going to be busy every once in a while if we have bad reps. Let's not say bad, questionable. Is there any reason why we can't make a motion to accept these policies into our policy manual? I would, I would entertain a motion then.
I would make a motion that we consider this the second reading for the nine thousands, the can I just say all of these policies listed on the agenda?
I think I would be fine with that. I'll second that motion. Because I can. All those in favor of considering all these policies in this policy update as second readings and entered into our policy manual? Say aye.
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Okay. A, a really good part about this particular policy update is, is now we're caught up to the first readings. We have no other policies hanging out there, so when we dive back into it in February, because in, in January, we have a, a meeting, at the end of January, we will have on the twenty-fifth, a meeting for the board to, we have a gentleman come in to help us learn our jobs better, to train us and give us some input on what it really needs to be a board member. So we won't have a policy meeting in January, but we will have that special meeting. So end of February is when we will see new policies. Unless one comes up that we need to absolutely get right on. So that's, you two have put in and appreciate all the hard work that you two will put in.
Yeah, thank you for doing all that before we got there.
There's, there's, there's a lot more. I think we're over half, Mr. Doolan?
Oh, yeah.
Two-thirds or something, so, so we're...
But you know legislature meeting, right?
Yeah, hey, stop. Discussion items that we have, we, one thing that we really want to get back to is having a yearly calendar that's not just year-to-year. We've been doing it since I've been here. Every year, we've located a calendar, and we want to approve a three-year calendar. So Mr. Doolan, I think probably Mr. Davis is here to do that, but to talk to us about our three-year calendar.
Yes, in your packet there, you should have an electronic copy of, just a draft of three different school year calendars there. Just maybe to help you guys out there, just to point out some things that are there that we need to consider. I've assembled an ad hoc committee. We have representation from each building on this committee, and we're working on these calendars together, and then when we feel like we're, we're ready, what we would like to do is bring a calendar for you guys to look at and then potentially approve. Some things that I do need to point out to you, if you look, I'm kind of looking over Mr. Doolan's shoulder here, in the, in the twenty-four, twenty-five calendar for next year, if you go all the way to the bottom, it shows the number of days for the staff, it shows the number of days for the student. If you notice, there's a couple little negative twos, okay, that are red there. And the reason for that is if we want to start the school year the same week that we started this year, and we want to end before Memorial Day, and then keep instructional hours in instructional days, and work days for staff exactly the same, we're two days short with this calendar, okay? Because it's not possible, okay? Because there's just not enough days. Now, why is there a discrepancy? Well, as you guys all know, this year, we were able to pick up a couple days prior to Christmas. We did not have a two, a two-week Christmas vacation. If you look on this one, Christmas falls on Wednesday next year. We're really, probably not going to be in school on Christmas Eve, that wouldn't be very popular, okay? And then, of course, that means that New Year's falls on, on a Wednesday as well. Well, for two years, we're really pushed into a, a two-week Christmas vacation. So we weren't able to pick up those two days. If you look at the third calendar on there, it moves to the end of the week, we can pick up a couple days at the start of the week, and then if you see on the last calendar there, there's not a minus two. Okay? We, I was able to, with our, kind of looking at the days, we were able to pick up those days. All right? So that's why that minus two is there. Because we're trying to keep instructional days and staff workdays the same as we are currently on right now, okay? Now, just, just so you know, what, what we'll, we'll do is when our committee gets together and will look at this, we'll look at ways to remedy that, all right? One of the things that we potentially could do, if you guys look at the start of each one of those school years, we have five staff workdays. Okay? Couple of those could be turned into student days. And so maybe we have a couple staff days, a couple student days, a staff day. You see what I'm saying? In that five days, if we were to pull in two of those days and and have students, for example, maybe come back on a Wednesday and a Thursday, we could have a staff workday Monday and Tuesday, and then Friday, again. That would, that would fix the student contact days. We're still two days short for staff, so maybe we throw in a Friday here or a Friday there. You see what I'm saying? Pick up two days. That's a possibility. We start two days earlier. I mean, we just push the calendar back, start two days earlier. We go two days after Memorial Day, okay? So those are some of the things that we're going to look at. And then, of course, any recommendations or anything that you want me to take back to the committee, we can look at those things as well. But I just wanted you to know that this is where we're at right now. If I tried to keep these exactly the same as this year's calendar, and that's where I ran into the two-day discrepancy, just because of where the holiday falls. The other thing is that I know that there's been people that said, eh, it's really, would be really nice to have a week at Thanksgiving. We could pick up a week at Thanksgiving, but then that would be a minus four, okay, instead of a minus two. So those are some things. So that, those are a lot of the conversations that we have with, with the committee, and we go from there. Just wanted you guys to know that we, we did work on it, we put together some draft calendars, and then obviously, I'm going to take back to the, to the committee what the, you know, the wishes of the board, and we're going to go from there, see what we, what we can just make it work.
So one question that I have, and correct me if I'm wrong, help me out here. So we, has there always been five days of work scheduled before school started?
No.
Didn't we do that just last year?
Last year was the first.
And it was because of our new curriculum?
It just, it just, we had some required trainings, new curriculum, all those, you know, all of those different things, and we're going to continue to have that, you know? Each year, we're adopting new materials for different curricular areas. So, I mean, that's going to be an ongoing thing. Mr. Doolan alluded to the legislature. We don't know what required trainings potentially could come out of the legislative session, so we may need to have more time to ensure that we meet those required trainings that we have to have for all of our staff. So, but last year was the first time we had five staff days to start the school year.
So my question, and I really will open it up to, to the administrators, any of you. How crucial are those five days? How much, how much do we, would we take away from you if we said we wanted, we want to use two of those days as student days, and you would get three staff days instead of five? What?
It would it would be tough for the high school. There's a lot of training that needs to take place, and just the preparation for the start of the year would be difficult for, for my staff. I, I like that they have the opportunity to do the training, but also have opportunity to prepare for the year.
Appreciate that.
And I, I would just say from the special education side and some of the things that are currently in legislation, the trainings that we have coming up in the month of January and February for staff are on verbal de-escalation and how to support behavior, and we couldn't squeeze that into the beginning of the year. squeeze that into the beginning of the year, partly because we need to do some, I needed to be certified, some other people needed to, but those would be some of the kinds of things we would now be looking to put at the beginning of the school year that wasn't even there already. So, in terms of behavior, seclusion, restraint, and support for students, not just on IEPs and 504s, but in general, we didn't have all those pieces yet. And, and so, those days continue to be added to legislatively, and of course, for our students' benefit and our teachers' benefit as well. So, I think it would, we would be hard pressed not to have those days.
No, I appreciate that. That's, I don't wanna, I don't really wanna entertain something that's gonna put.
Yeah, yeah. And it would be the same for all of us. Drew's, he did very well. It is, it's very important that the teachers have that time at all building levels.
Okay.
I'm thinking five days sounds lovely as a teacher, just because you have so many meetings with, you know, district-wide, school, you know, individual, so many meetings, and then very little time in your classroom. So, at least, I mean, at least if they could even have like two full days in their classrooms to do what needs done would be, which it usually ends up being one, to be honest. Yeah, I mean, you, yeah.
And we were, and we were learning the new.
Student management.
Student management system that was new to everyone. And so, that was really important to try to figure out as we got the school year going.
Thank you, thank you for your input. I appreciate that, because it helps me.
Still, still.
Better focus on what's needed first. Another question that the two days, if, if we didn't, if we didn't pick those two days up, we still need, the, the state need for butts in seats for doing the waiting.
Hours.
I think we would still be above, in all buildings, hours. I would have to, I'd have to, I need to review the kindergarten as the one area of possible concern, so I will make sure that I have an answer for that, because I think that's the only grade level I'm a little concerned about. I think all of the grade levels, we would be fine. I like to just estimate, just say that each day is seven hours of instruction, okay? Because at the high school, it's, it's an hour for each one of those classes. It's a little bit less at the elementary level, but in that ballpark, six to seven hours of instruction for each day. So, if you miss two days, you're, you're losing 14 hours of instruction at high school, potentially about 12 hours of instruction at, at Pioneer School and high school.
On the committee, are there, is there parent input?
Yes, yes. We have parent input, we have teacher input, administrator, yep, yep. And what, the, the parent members that are on there, when I went out and solicited people to volunteer to help out, I tried to find parents that had kids in local schools, so that they would have kind of, you know, a varying perspective. Yep.
So, one thing that you're not hearing is we tasked that committee with coming up with this three-year calendar, and, and we wanted to start school at the same time and end school at the same time. Then they just kind of adjusted and tried to figure out, okay, how do we get as many days as we can with those two? There might have been a couple other things, but that was the main. We wanted to keep this contact hours as close to as we possibly could with the same start period and the same end period. So, that's when this, that, that committee came up with this calendar to try to meet that criteria.
And, and you kinda touched on it, we meet the state's requirement, the negative two is actually our own school board requirement.
Absolutely, yes, yep, absolutely. Ask them, to get them out, let teachers see them, let people see those, the parents, you know, have the parents share it with people so they can take a look as well.
So, we need to, so we need to work back. The main thing that I'm getting from this discussion now is we don't wanna take, we don't, we don't wanna increase those two days out of our, our teachers' time.
That's, that's what I heard from the administrators, but I might throw one together that's that way, just so it's there, just so you guys can see what it might look like. And then, and then that way, talk with the committee that they're interested in looking at that possibility.
You can. I'm not too interested in it.
Okay. These are all, I'm just saying, they're all.
From someone I heard, but yeah.
Yep, yep.
No, I appreciate, I appreciate your time.
Nope, that was good.
Mr. Bush, if I could, could you please emphasize to the committee that, please ensure they go back out and make sure that message is spread? Because I heard that they, a teacher from a certain school wasn't aware, and we wanna make sure, as you know, everybody gets a chance.
I'll, I'll make sure that the, just to remind them, once we give the draft calendars, make sure they get in their hands as many people so they can take a look at them.
Awesome.
Yep.
And I might jump in with more input, but I like the input we got right here.
Oh, absolutely. You bet.
And it's not just me. I said that, but it's the rest of us too. Next discussion item for us on our agenda, oh, we have more questions about the calendar item, sorry.
Is there any consideration to make an exemption to the two calendar years that have the negative two, so we can keep the start date, the end date the same without flexing beyond those and giving up the five days? Just to, because we already meet the state standard, is there any consideration, consideration from the board? And maybe we can hear from somebody, some of you guys, would that impact our students' learning ability if we took, took those two days away just to keep with the same schedule, but still meet the state requirement?
Mr. Davies, do you know, do you know what the hours that the high school is over?
I want, I wanna say that the, the high school, for some reason, the number that sticks in my head is about 1,000, like 37, something like that.
I think we're like six, yeah.
So, and 990 is the minimum, okay? 990 hours. We have to ensure at least 990 hours of instruction over the course of the school year. I believe at the middle school, are you guys nine?
Yeah, we're about the 900.
900.
Yeah.
And we're getting how many hours a day?
Seven.
So, it's 14 hours.
Yes, we're talking 14, basically.
14 days.
12 to 14 hours of instruction is what we would lose in two days.
Yeah, yeah, not.
Yeah, we'd be down to like 1,013, and if it was 990, we're still over 23.
For 11 hours.
Hours. Hours.
I'm saying days. Gonna take hours.
Hours.
That is correct.
You guys, I can, I will, I will get the current number of hours at each building and share that with Mr. Doolin, and he'll get it out to you guys, okay? So, you guys can see where we're at.
We've seen that before, I think, last year before, prior to you three, so those numbers.
And then there's like snow day considerations in there that don't count, right? Or is there something for snow days?
Yes, probably. You can have 11 hours.
Right, knock on wood.
You can have 11 hours of emergency closure that you don't have to make up. You need to be above and beyond that. If you drop below the 990 minimum, for example, at high school, you would have to make those up. When we had snow in Gettysburg, we, we had to come up with kind of creative ways to make up some time, but because we were over so many hours in the buildings, we didn't have, you know, and that was a, hopefully, a once-in-a-lifetime thing, we didn't have to add a bunch of days back. We were able to pull it off and not have to go to school into June, potentially.
Tell me, questions? Okay. Again, thank you.
You bet.
Lots of work, and we appreciate that. To let the, let the committee know that we appreciate the work that they've done.
I will, I will.
It's fantastic. This has been Mr. Davies' baby, so I don't know what we're gonna do 20 years from now.
He can zoom in.
He can zoom in. I talked a little bit about it before, earlier, but January 25th, Dr. Gore will be here. He's from Idaho School Board Association to meet with us and talk to us about visions for improvement, clarification, expectations, communication vision, roles, trust, commitment, governance, priorities. But he'll, that's just a few of the things he'll get us out of the world's agenda here shortly, I'm sure. Federal programs roundup, you wanna talk to us a little bit about what that is, January 22nd?
If I could back up a tad bit, and just, just for the, for the people that are here, and us two, it's really, it's really, it's really, it's a great thing that Phil, Dr. Gore's coming out to, to talk to us about expectations, to talk to us about governance, to talk to us about how we can operate in more of a succinct way and, and really carry on the strategic, the strategic strat vision for the district and the CIP and my, our goals, your goals for me. So, it's really, it's gonna be, it's a great opportunity and you, you know, the new folks and to start fresh, and I'm, I'm excited, and the community should be excited, because we're all starting on the same, the same sheet of music, and so, it'd be, it'd be a lot of, a lot of good questions answered during that 91, I believe, give or take, training. So, yes, sir. Okay, yeah, thank you for the, for the question. Federal programs roundup, if you will, and I'll tee it up, then I'll hand it off to, to Barbara, Dave, and what this is, and again, you have a flyer in front of you. It's broken, it's, it's in English and Spanish, and just for your FYI, tomorrow, I will send it out to the district, I'll send that district-wide to our parents via Infinite Campus. And what it is, it's, it's gonna do two things for us. One, it will help us check that, one of those blocks that we got, get done for our federal program audit, but more than that, it will share with the community the great resources that we have, as well as the community as a whole, pay it, things of that nature. So, with that said, whoever wants to.
Okay. Well, I, I wanna begin by just thanking Barbara for all the work that she's done to, to help get this put together, keep me organized. She's been putting a lot of extra time and effort into the federal programs now that I'm, I'm down at Pioneer School, so she's, she's done an incredible job, helped so much with the budget, so much with all of those different compliance items we need, so really appreciate all the work that she's done for us in the school district related to the federal programs, in addition to lots of other things. But like Mr. Doolin said with the flyer there that, that we've put together, really excited about this. On that day, what, one of the things that we really need to do is we need to get more parent and community input. We need to get feedback from them. They need to tell us how our current federal programs are assisting them, they need to let us know what needs they have that we're not meeting. We need to find people that are willing to serve maybe in volunteer roles on boards or committees. So, we, we really do need to get a lot of our community members, our parents, there so that we can hear their voice. We're gonna survey them, we're gonna try to get as much information we can, and then we need that information for reporting purposes, and then also so we can select individuals and people that are interested in helping serve on committees and parent advisory committees and those kinds of things. The other side of it is, we really wanna build that bridge like Mr. Doolin alluded to with what we can do in the Weiser School District and what resources are available for us to help any of our, our families that would be impacted by these federal programs, be it, you know, homeless youth, you know, migrant students, English language learner students and families, because we are talking about, I think you see on there that CWI is actually gonna come over and talk about offering adult education classes, okay? So, we want to, so that's the whole focus of this, is to, we're gonna do it kind of in a, in a roundup, kind of a fair kind of atmosphere at the, at the auxiliary gym. We're gonna have booths set up, informational flyers, we're gonna do some drawings and different things, we're gonna have places where they can be surveyed, we're gonna serve dinner. We just want everybody to come, and it really does impact all age levels in the, in the school district, because with our, with our Title I funds at Pioneer School, Park School, and at, at the middle school as a targeted assist school, it has to do with our literacy plan. How are we doing? What do we need to do differently? How do you see these months, these funds being spent, and do you have suggestions on how we might spend those funds differently to get more bang for our bucks? So, we really do need to get people in, so we're hoping that there's hundreds of people that show up, and we get a lot of great feedback from them. And so, this is our first effort with a big event like this, and we're gonna see how it goes, and then we're gonna gather together and we'll, we'll debrief, and then we'll see what we need to do, you know, differently in the future, and what we need to continue to do with this so that we can get that information out and get people involved. So, Barb, do you have anything to add to that?
I don't. It's just gonna be a great event, and we hope to all attend.
Yeah, sounds great.
Yep, should be good.
Again, thanks. I've got people that are working behind the scenes, up front, behind it, around it. We appreciate everybody's work. It sounds like a great opportunity to get the community some, some really important information. So, we have on item G, our community things to talk about, our supplemental levy, which is always worth the conversation. Ours is going to expire pretty quick, so we can start talking about getting the information out. Mr. Doolin, would you share?
Yes, sir, I'd be glad to, thank you. Just to recap, if you remember last, last month, I showed a slideshow and was on what it was, where we're going, and who we need, why we need to do it. So, just, just to reiterate if we could, if I could, the supplemental levy is due to expire June 24. A new one would take effect on July the 1st, 24, and continue till 26. The new tax levy would be on December 2024, and the last supplemental levy was approved in 2022. So, what, what's it for? Well, we don't charge students to participate in sports, that's one thing. It helps cover transportation costs, it helps cover curriculum, and it, it helps us in this district pay for the other half of the salary for kindergarten teachers. Because remember, the state only funds us for half, half a salary or half a kindergarten, and we have all-day kindergarten. So, it helps, it, it, it helps, it helps us every day with just the, the cost of running the district. As you remember from your taxes already, you saw a, some money back with, with House Bill 292, and we know in 2023 that we were told that it must pay down bonds, which we had none, we must pay down the levy, which we did, and then, and then some, some other money that is out there right now, we're just waiting on legislature to tell us we can spend it, and then we'll come to you and ask you how you'd, how you'd like to spend that. And then, it, it, House Bill 292 for 2024, we're unsure how much we'll get from the state, but we're assured some. So, there's a silver lining in reference to the supplemental levy again, in that it will, at the end of the year, it will, it takes some more off through taxes. We just don't know how much right now. And come next month, we probably should talk about a resolution to either go, go out for it again, or talk about not doing it. It's becoming, it's becoming that time of year, because it'll be in May, and I've seen other school districts right now already have it on their schedule for tonight, or we're okay if we do it next month, Mr. Chairman.
Questions?
You did a really good cover of the past.
Oh, thank you, yes, ma'am.
All good information that, that we start talking about now, and like you say, we'll continue to talk about it, it'll probably be on the agenda for, for a vote next vote.
Sure.
But it's, it's good information for our public as to why, what it's for, and we've put together a good program, a good presentation that if, if we choose to do this again, that we'll make sure we get some meetings out with the public, townhouse meetings. Thank you for that.
Yes, sir.
Does anybody have anything that they would like to see on our future agendas?
I was approached by a concerned coach who would like us to discuss the dual-sport athlete, if possible.
Because that is something, the dual-sport athlete is something the board has to approve, is that correct? Does anybody know? We'll have to do some more, we'll have to do some more.
We do have a current thing, I think it's, it's at the high school level.
Be careful, though, remember, we can't, all we can say is we wanna bring it up next month. I don't want.
Good point.
Yes, sir.
Okay. So, Mr. Doolin's talk. We'll put it on the agenda, for discussion item for next board meeting. I better put. Okay, anything else that anybody's aware of that we'd like to have for the next agenda? I can't think of anything off the top of my head. We'll come up with something, I'm sure, to put on the agenda for next month.
Oh, sure we will, yes, sir.
Communication and information.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I have one piece for you, that I know you're gonna pass on to your staff, so.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I have one piece for you, that I know you're going to pass on to your house, so.
I like this part, but I don't...
Dear Mr. Doolin and board members, the Weiser Education Foundation would like to thank you for the memorial in memory of Jane Nelson's husband, Jim Nelson. We appreciate your kindness. Thank you, Cindy Campbell, Weiser Education Foundation Board Member.
Thank you for everything that you thought about that, I took care of that, appreciate it. Any other...
Yes, sir.
Do we, do we have an executive session that we need to go into?
Yes, sir.
Let's, let's take a break and give everybody our snacks, and then let them know that when we come back, we will be going into executive session. So, you can come in for 30 seconds while I...